Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Finance. It is September 21st. We will call this meeting in order. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in visible liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just a message to the public. You may send your comments pertaining to an agenda item before or after the meeting to the following email, BOF@FairfieldCT.org. And as you would in a public meeting, please include your name and home address with your comment. We did offer the public to call in if they had contacted Jennifer Carpenter by noon yesterday, and we did not have any takers. So, before we start tonight, just want to say to Brenda, Brenda, from me, and I know our whole board, we extend our condolences to you for the loss of your mother. It's tough. You have our deepest sympathies. You know, we're sorry for your loss, your family's loss. And we just want to take a moment of silence for your mother, Jerry Benton. So I asked the board and all to take a moment of silence for Jerry Benton, our first select woman's mother. Okay, thank you. So we will get started with item number three, which is the main item of our agenda tonight. It's really the only item of significance. And due to the vote that the Board of Selectmen took yesterday, I'm going to start with a motion to strike item number three on our agenda and insert the new resolution that we received earlier today from the administration. So can I have a motion to strike item number three that's on the agenda, and we'll replace it with the resolution that we received today? Mr. Dewitt, seconded by Ms. Charlton, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Okay, I am going to read our resolution and put this on the table for us. So this is now our item number three, to here consider and act upon a resolution authorizing the acceptance of American Rescue Plan Act grant funds in an aggregate amount of up to $24,830,536 and appropriating $24,790,000 of said funds for costs related to various projects. Whereas on March 11th, 2021, the $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, the ARPA, was enacted, which includes $1.6 billion in relief for local governments. And whereas the town of Fairfield, the town, is expected to receive a total of $24,830,536 in ARPA funds from the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, the Recovery Fund Grant. And whereas, to date, the town has received $12,415,283 of the Recovery Fund Grant with an additional $12,415,283 expected to be received by June of 2022. Whereas, the town desires to accept the Recovery Fund Grant and appropriate said funds for costs associated with the project set forth in the attached Exhibit One, in the amounts designated for each project as set forth in Exhibit One. Now therefore, it is resolved that the town is authorized to accept the Recovery Fund Grant, and it is further resolved that $24,790,000 other Recovery Fund Grant funds, subject to availability, be appropriated for costs associated with the project set forth in the attached Exhibit One, in the amounts designated for each project as set forth in the Exhibit One. And it is further resolved that the first select woman is authorized to take all actions necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution. Can I have a motion to put this before us? Mr. Dewitt, seconded by Mr. Testane. So this motion is now before us. And I wanted to read that, just, you know, for the public, because this was just sent to us today, and it is changed from our agenda. So with that, Ms. Kupchak, would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I first want to say, I really do appreciate the condolences from you and the board for the passing of my mother. And I will go right into some things. I know we tried to, I believe we answered all the questions that were asked of the board, either during the last meeting or follow-up questions that were presented via email to my administration. And so I hope that everyone did get their, the answers to their questions that they presented, either on the meeting or during, on email. And I'm here to answer any additional questions, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to get going on these projects. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kupchak. I do, I do want to just announce for the public that we do have, the department heads here with us to answer any questions as well if they come up. And we have our town attorney with us, and we have bond counsel with us as well. So thank you all for taking the time to be here tonight. So with that, I'm going to open it up to the board for some questions, and we can, we can start with the six sections on the items and just go through these again. As Ms. Kupchak said, questions were sent to the administration since our last meeting, which was September 9th, and the administration responded with answers. And so those questions, if you have follow-ups, please feel free to ask them. But we'll go through, we'll go through these items. But before we do, I just want to turn it to the attorney, turn it over to the Attorney General, the Town Attorney, just in case. Hey Jim, you're now the Attorney General of the state of Connecticut. We'll have to demote the town attorney for Fairfield. Do you have any, you want to, you want to bring to our attention, before we start, any changes from the last time we met?
The only changes that I would relate to the Board of Finance, as it probably is already aware, is that the questions regarding the process for having these appropriations approved has, has been resolved. And it's been resolved in the form of it going through what is more or less the budget process that the town follows, such that you will vote on this, it will go to the RTM, and the RTM has the ability to, to cut items or reduce them, but not add, or certainly not initiate anything new, like yourselves. So that's been, that's been resolved, hence the reason why I did not produce a tome explaining the legal issues that I was grappling with at the time we last spoke.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. And Mr. Walsh?
Baldwin, yeah, I was kind of going to ask you that. I just found out that, that whole procedure kind of changed. I think I found out yesterday. And I guess the question is, is the board, the board had asked for a legal opinion, and you chose not to do a legal opinion because of the process changing? Is that correct?
I chose not to do one because the, the reason for presenting the legal issue was rendered moot. You're familiar with that term. So it's no longer an issue.
So has your legal opinion changed from the one that you presented to us at our last meeting?
No, the, the opinion I provided you was one which was based on my best reading of the law, the charter, and our, our grant policies. And as I explained then, it's like fitting a round peg into a square hole, and there is no clear-cut way of approving or appropriating these funds. But after consideration and discussion with RTM leadership and the first select woman, everybody kind of reached the same consensus that we will follow this process. And I am perfectly comfortable with that. I think that it is perfectly appropriate. So I, I wouldn't say I'm changing my legal opinion. I still feel like the best analogy to the process that we're presented, to the situation that we're presented with, the best process, most fitting would be that where you have surplus funds and the first selectman, the Board of Selectmen request appropriations be made to these other accounts for these purposes when there are excess funds available. But that doesn't mean that that's the absolute, absolute way to do it, the certain way to do it. And we've come to a consensus on this being a better process.
Your legal opinion that this is legal, the reason I'm asking is because I've always been a firm believer of that. Whatever the powers that are vested in these bodies are the powers that are vested in the body, there are charter or state statute. And I never want to, on this board, ever vote on anything that does not, that I'm not vested in the power of, such as union congress. We have no power whatsoever, never want, I never want it, if it's not given to us. On the same thing, on the same line of thought, you know, if the RTM really doesn't have the power to vote on this, they shouldn't have the power either. And, but it's your legal opinion that they have the power to vote on this?
It's my legal opinion that the administration has the right and power and ability to, to determine what process there should be in dealing with these funds, which are exceptional, unprecedented. So yes, I think that they have, they are now bestowed with the legal authority based on that agreement and understanding.
That was an administration decision? It wasn't, they, they were vested with that authority, and therefore it's their decision whether they wanted to have the RTM hear it or not hear it, or vote on it or not vote it. Is that correct?
Ultimately, that is correct.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand the process, because this kind of question's going to come up, and I just want to know when to ask whether certain people and who has the power to vest people with the power to vote on it going forward. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Dewitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, Mr. Baldwin, just, just so we're painfully clear, and I, and I watched the Board of Select meeting, so I think it's worth saying here, we can, we can discuss any individual line item we want here, we can decrease the value, but ultimately, we're really voting on one big number, which is that $24,790,000, correct?
That's correct. You could have crafted the resolution differently, but this is the most efficient way, I think, to handle the situation. Yes.
And, and, and I agree with you, so thank you just for that clarification.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Just to clarify, we're voting on $24,830,536.
Yes, I apologize. Yes, I'm sorry.
$40,000 difference out of 24. Mr. Matola?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that question, Mr. Dewitt. So, hey Jim, if we, if we decide as a board to, I'm going to use different terminology, remove, defer an item in the amount that's associated with it, then, then those monies would just go into our, I don't know what we're calling it, our, our AARP fund, and at a later date, we would determine how we want to use those monies. Is that a fair statement?
It is, depending on who you define as "we," because the, if, if those funds are available, there are funds in the ARPA trust account, let's call it, for projects which have already been approved by the town bodies, then the administration could request the use of those funds to continue those projects that have already been approved, which apparently maybe needed more funding. Whereas if you come up with an entirely new program, that is not something that would be your initiative, it would be that of the administration. And, and again, those funds must be obligated. We spoke about the meaning of obligated no later than December 31st, 2024.
Okay. All right. Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matola. Any questions or further comments in regards to Mr. Baldwin's opinion or statement? Okay, I'm seeing none. Thank you, thank you, Jim, for being here, and please don't, don't go. I'm sure we'll need you before this night is out. Okay, so let's, so let's look, take a look at this list as a board, and we'll just go through, I think the easiest thing to do, again, questions were asked and responses were given, but we'll, you know, we moved the quarterly meeting to the 29th of September to give us tonight to take the time that we feel we need on this, on this one motion, right? So we'll just start again at the top. Are there any questions on the social services and mental health items? Okay. On economic development?
I have a couple.
Oh, I missed you. Sorry, Mr. Walsh, go ahead.
Not a problem. Rundebs, have all of the organizations been advised that they are, that this money is there here, like, kind of on a one-time basis, and that when it runs out, the town of Fairfield will not, under any circumstance, fund any more of those amounts?
Yes.
I want to make sure you have an agreement when you've explained this to these people, because Senator Murphy was very clear on this money. He strongly advised all communities not to use it for personnel. He couldn't be any clearer in his statement, because he said people were, you know, that money's not going to be there, and basically people will be laid off over it, because the funds are going to dry up, the one-time thing, and that if you use it for personnel, don't come running back to us, the United States government, for more money, because it won't be there. And he strongly advised against people using it to hire people. And it seems to be, all the organizations seem to be doing that. They seem to be using the funds, in one way or another, to hire personnel. And I understand it in their write-ups a little bit, that this is a tough time with COVID, that there's desperate need for certain things, including people who are having, you know, depression and things like that. But I just want to be clear that no one gets blindsided and thinks the town of Fairfield is there to backstop them, you know, in the future with further funds, because we really can't. I mean, we give a lot of money, as you know, every year to our charities. Some people have a problem with it, actually. I don't, but others do. But I don't think we're going to be in a position to be able to backstop any of those, any of those funds for any of those services, as worthy as they all are. I think they are worthy. But, you know, if people think that some of these situations are going to go away in a year or two, they're, they're probably not. And I just want to make sure that the organizations fully understand that, you know, this is a nice grant we're getting, we're sharing it with some of these organizations to help get our people help in our community, but it's just, it's, unfortunately, it's a finite amount, and it's, once it's gone, it's gone.
No, I appreciate you bringing that up, and I did reiterate it many times throughout the last three months, throughout the different boards, at the workshop in July, and repeatedly throughout the different meetings, that the nonprofits were told this was a one-time infusion of money. And the only nonprofit that is using it for staff, in this case, is Operation Hope, and they said they needed it for the influx of need during this COVID crisis. And they were very aware that it was for just the one time, and they have the option of either fundraising to maintain those positions or lay them off because the need has been subsided to a certain extent due to COVID.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any further questions on these two items? Okay, I'm seeing none. Let's go to economic development. Two items under economic development. Any questions on the two items under economic development? Mr. Matola?
Thank you. And I asked, and, Mr. Brown, thank you for getting this done, and it was kind of late notice by me. Can we just get a very brief presentation on what the downtown resiliency surfacing project is, and where it's going to be, and what does it entail, and is there buy-in from the local businesses in that area? Just, did someone speak to that just for a couple of minutes?
Mr. Hurley, can you speak to that, please?
Sure, I can, unless Mr. Marsila wants to, or I'll start, and John can finish off. The goal of the project is to utilize and install green infrastructure to mitigate flooding and improve resiliency in downtown Fairfield. The project employs a range of strategies that will reduce the flooding effects of critical industry, infrastructure, and key businesses in the central business district. As mentioned previously, the goal is to reduce the flooding. The town and the consultant will analyze a few alternative solutions, mainly to bypass the 30-inch pipe restriction that's there, install pervious or porous asphalt along Carter Henry parking areas. It will include landscaping strips or rain gardens, tree boxes, pavers, et cetera. It's going to be an array of pocket solutions and global solutions for the downtown area. There are a couple municipalities that have done this very successfully. New Haven, I know, being one, and we would use those municipalities as a model.
Okay. Hey Bill, that is the, that is the Sanford Street area you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, essentially, Carter Henry, Sanford Street, some of the, the parking areas there, that whole general downtown area, north of the Post Road, for the most part.
And didn't we do something a few years ago to mitigate some of the flooding there?
Yes, yes, we did. The town received a steep grant, and we were able to install underground detention pipe at Sherman Green, and then we installed some drainage structures to help reduce some of the flooding.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that, and I don't have any further questions on that. Thank you.
Okay.
And if I could just jump in, Mr. Chairman. John, this was the, the largest ask by the business community, because we had, you know, met for many months, and Mark Barnhart said he really wasn't getting requests for assistance as we were during the height of COVID and throughout. But this was the top thing that the businesses had asked for in the downtown area. The first phase that Bill Hurley was speaking of, that was the first piece of it. This is the second piece to additionally mitigate the flooding. So this was the top priority for our downtown business merchant.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Ms., Ms. Marmian?
Thanks so much. Ms. Kupchak actually asked one of my questions, which is, is this what the business district, you know, has been rallying for, which is, it's great to hear that, that they're behind this. My second question is more for Mr. Hurley in terms of maintenance costs for this permeable surface moving forward. How does it, how frequently does this surface need to be resurfaced? How does it compare to other paving costs? What can the town expect, in other words, from an operational standpoint in future budgets to maintain or replace this surface?
It's pretty much standard, because it still is asphalt, it's just larger voids for the most part, and maybe a slight difference in the spec. But for the most part, it's, it's going to be very similar. Maybe instead of a 15-year service life, it might be 13 or something like that, or 14, but for the most part, pretty close. There will be a little bit of maintenance that is needed, but not on an every day or every year basis, that's for sure.
Thank you. And is it, just in terms of, let's say, 13 to 15 years, the resurfacing, is the cost to replace this as a permeable surface exponentially higher, pretty much the same, just looking forward to maintain this?
I would, if we were going to take out and replace in kind, it would be slightly higher on, on that aspect. When we did the porous pavement for the railroad station, the prices were higher than, than normal. But that's something that we would have to, you know, budget over time. And as more and more municipalities go with this type of approach, much like everything else, the more that something comes more in common, the prices seem to go down, and that's what we'd be expecting as well.
All right, thanks so much. Very helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Ms. Charlton?
Thank you. And I'm not sure who to, who to direct this to, but in terms of the area, you know, you mentioned Carter Henry, Sanford Street, but then you said sort of the general downtown business area. Can you just be a little more specific as to, you know, what area we're talking about, how large the area is? And does this, you know, in any way preclude any additional development that might take place in that area? Or would it be at, at risk for, you know, future development if some is planned? Maybe just, you know, I, I looked at the backup materials that were provided, but I was having a, a little bit of difficulty understanding exactly the scope of the project.
Sure. The core area, for the most part, is going to be north of the Post Road, almost envision the triangle. It would be Sanford Street and then Carter Henry. It could, it will include Miller Street, Miller Street, and perhaps, if it seems beneficial, maybe Uncle Place as well. But for the most part, that core area, that triangle, is what we're referring to, Miller Street, Sanford, and Carter Henry. And as far as inhibiting development or anything like that, the answer would, would be no. There's definitely a trend to reduce impervious surfaces, and any development should try to do that anyway. And a lot of the things that are being proposed are still going to be, you know, going to be mainly in the public light of way. So it shouldn't impact any, any potential for development.
Okay. I mean, we're not going to be developing on, we're not going to be resurfacing and then developing on top of it. I guess that's what I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, that would be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Mr. Walsh?
Hello, Mr. Hurley, how are you? Thanks for being here this evening.
Oh, sure.
At the train station area on the map, the pervious surface area, right, that's all in red, that's a large area there, right?
The, the north, the north of the tracks?
Yep. Where does that water go? Because obviously, it's a very large, open parking spot with hundreds of parking spots. So that water hits that, right, it's an impervious surface right now. And where, and where does that go? Does that go into this 30-inch pipe you're talking about?
Yes, yes, it does.
So you're trying to take away that vast amount of water that's falling on there, one of the areas, to take that away from the 30-inch pipe? Take that away from the 30-inch pipe, correct?
Right, and just to be clear, on some of this, on the north side of the tracks, we did implement already some pervious pavement or porous pavement north of the tracks. And because the plan and the study were done prior to the town repaving that section of the railroad station, the parking lot. And so that's why they have all those, you know, rows on the plan. But we were able to, if I recall, don't quote me exactly on it, but I think it was with an area that was like 120 by 60, it was able to collect almost two and a half acres of the parking area that would go to that. So those are the examples that we'd be looking for.
Okay. And, you know, I've had a business downtown for over 20 years, but not everyone gets down there during some of these high-water events that we have had recently. And can you give everyone just some sense of what happens to the roads during those heavy rains that we have? Because the first time I saw it, I was shocked at what I saw. I saw water going into businesses. But can you just give everyone a sense of what happens down there?
Sure. For whatever reason, back when they developed the downtown, and even as late as the 80s even, a lot of areas, you know, whether it be zoning or whether, you know, the better the business in terms of their model, you know, more parking, more impervious surface. And so a lot of that was highly developed with very little green infrastructure involved at all. The goal was basically you owned a third of an acre, put a building and put a parking lot, and then a little bit of landscaping, and that was it. So when it rains, everything that lands on the paved surface or concrete, or what we call an impervious surface, runs down, because it doesn't go back into the ground. It runs along the surface to be collected by storm drains or catch basins. And then all those flow into a couple of pipe sections that were built anywhere from the 1930s, WPA days, and maybe as recently as maybe the 60s or 70s for the most part, where there's only a couple of areas where the pipe crosses the Post Road. And one of these main areas is that 30-inch restriction, where, you know, the pipe has to, you know, and other utilities that are in there. And so all that water gets collected. And when you get a high-intense rainfall, I mean, these pipes were probably designed, I'm just going to say arbitrarily, one inch an hour. So if you get two inches an hour or three inches in two hours, it's way too much for the pipes to handle. And the water starts to back up, and then it floods certain parts of the downtown area. The ones that get it the most are, even though it might only be a difference of one foot in elevation, but that, the low points or the quote "bowl" areas are the ones that get hit the hardest. And certainly, I think over the years, most people know that, like Sanford Street, across from the transit stop there, Sanford Street at the Post Road, that's one of those bowl areas where, you know, it doesn't take much for the water to just get above the six-inch curb. And then the next thing you know, because the elevations are all flat, it's going into the sidewalk and into the stores or wherever it may go.
The water at times has flown right into the stores, right? It's actually gone into a community theater. It goes all over the place, right?
That's correct.
Even the businesses on Sanford Street and Post Road, correct?
That is correct.
In regards to the train station north of the, of the train tracks, have you had, you've put some impervious surfaces there so far, already?
Oh, pervious surface, yeah, yeah, we did.
Impervious, I'm sorry, pervious surfaces.
Yeah, when we paved the parking lot, we did a section that was near the lower end of the train station, but not in the main aisle. And we were able to do the pervious or porous pavement there.
Did pretty well.
And it's done, it's done very well. There's only one slight drawback, and that would be, being honest, is that if you get a real, real quick freeze, you know, from a 40, you know, degree heavy rain and a quick freeze, sometimes the water hadn't had a chance to percolate into the ground, you know, or into its subbase. And so we just have to be a little careful of that. It's happened once or twice since we've done the situation. DPW just salts the area. It dissolves.
I had a developer try to tell me that underneath the train station parking on the north of the tracks, that it might be bedrock below there. Is that, you've not experienced that, right? You've had water?
There is. I mean, in an ideal situation, we would have loved to have 24 to 36 inches of subbase for the train station. Instead, it's more like eight inches average, eight to 10 inches average. But as I said before, that's really meant for those high-intens, you know, two inches in one hour storm. And so that eight inches, you know, should be enough. If we, if we get a deluge with, say, 10 inches of rain or something like that, it will just, it might not absorb as quickly, and it'll be treated just as regular asphalt and go to the catch basins.
Okay. So anything excess goes to the catch basin?
Right, that's correct, right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurley. Appreciate your help.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other questions for the items for economic development? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to public safety. We have three items. For the police, the body cams, the dash cams, and the tasers. For our fire department, a fire station rehabilitation. And we have the fill pile. Any questions on these items? Mr. Testani.
Thanks, Jim. I don't really have a question. I just want to acknowledge that the town did a great job in memorializing 9/11. It was 10 days ago today that the 20th commemorative event took place. And I just want to make a shout out to the police, the fire, the first responders, everyone that was there that day, including the first-class woman for what was a very moving tribute to those that lost their life that day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Testani. Any further questions, comments on these items? I'm seeing none, so I'm going to move forward. And just for the record, I don't plan on going back. I just want to move forward. So if you have questions, please, please ask them now, when we're at that section. Okay, quality of life, recreation, arts and culture. We have numerous items under this category. Any questions here? Ms. Marmian.
Thanks very much. I'm referring specifically to the senior center renovation for $850,000 and then to the deck patio behind the senior center for $100,000. And I recognize that this is an important investment in the senior center. And I think it's very important that we do this. My question really is, or maybe it's a comment and a question. There's been a lot of discussion amongst seniors, members of the senior center. There have been plans that have been developed. There have been, there's been comparative analysis comparing our senior center in Fairfield to other towns' senior centers, talking about a plan for how we can renovate our senior center and/or replace it in a different location to bring it up to perhaps what other towns have. To me, this, this investment represents just that, an investment. And I guess my question is, from the administration's standpoint, does this then mean that the town is committed to keeping the senior center where it is for the next, I don't know, 10 years or so? Is that, is that a conversation you've had with the department heads? The department heads at the senior center, it's a firm decision? I'm just wondering the commitment level? If this investment represents a commitment to keep the senior center where it is?
So thank you, Sheila. And, you know, yeah, when we were talking about this for months and months, all the different projects, you know, this was a tough one for me. Obviously, the senior center is not in great condition. And I thought about, wouldn't it be fabulous if we had enough money to build a state-of-the-art senior center like Westport and do something like that? And obviously, most of you have been involved for quite a long time. The location has its restrictions regarding FEMA and the amount you could put into that facility. We were thinking about other places we could put the senior center if we did want to build a state-of-the-art senior center. And as you know, we don't have a lot of land around town. So I know this discussion has been going on for many, many years. Oh, my God, even when I was on the RTM in 1999. I personally don't think we are, we are there yet to be able to build a state-of-the-art multi, multimillion-dollar facility for our seniors. So when it came to this money, I felt that this was the right thing to do for a center that is not upgraded, frankly. And the bathrooms are deplorable. And, you know, some of the items that we did put in here, we thought, while they do seem expensive, I get that, $950,000, at the same time, there is really an alternative. And I would have loved to have an alternative. I would love to have Fairfield have a senior center similar to Westport. But as we know, that took an extraordinary amount of time, money, private donations, public partnership. It was a long, long, long experience. So, and we do have the restriction of that, of the land where our senior center is. So without really thinking, we are able to do something of that magnitude. And also looking at the fact that we have, you know, $330 million worth of capital projects on our waterfall chart. We have the Board of Ed telling us about extraordinarily expensive air conditioning needs throughout the district, totaling probably somewhere between $70 and $100 million. And we have a very expensive situation facing us regarding the fill pile. So I just felt that this was the best avenue, really, to just give our seniors something. Because really, they've been neglected down there for a very long time. So that's, that really was my sort of thought process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marmian. Any further questions on recreation, arts, and or culture? We have Mr. Calabrese here. Mr. Matola.
Thank you. Hey, Anthony, my only question is on the playgrounds. I'm pretty familiar with most of them. But I guess my question is, I know, I thought I held some information on your strategic plan that we funded. And I thought I saw a proposal, and that's happening. I guess my question then is, in relation to that, how do these playgrounds fit in? Do you think it might be a better idea to wait until that plan is finalized before we spend the money on the playgrounds? I mean, what's your thoughts on that?
My thoughts on this are pretty easy. Most of our playgrounds are 25-plus years old. These five were the oldest on the list and needed to be replaced, whether we did, you know, this study or not on the rest of our facilities. These are indeed to be replaced.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to ask you that question. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Testani and then Ms. Charlton.
Thanks, Jim. Hey, Anthony, how are you?
Doing well, Jack. Good to see you.
Good, yeah, you too. I just have a quick question, specific to the park sort of dovetailing off of Mr. Matola. The, I'm just curious, when you say like Lincoln Park as an example, I happened to go by there the other day. And when you say "replace," help me to understand. To me, the park looks like it needs a complete renovation. There are these overwhelmingly large trees that are, have to have been there for, I don't know, at least 50, maybe 100 years. You know, so I'm just curious, what's your plan specific to that park and some of the others? Could you just give us maybe like a highlight of what the $950,000 is going to give us?
This is strictly playgrounds we're talking about. With this, this is not, yeah, this is not the additional tree work or, you know, putting in basketball courts or any of that kind of stuff.
It's just the playground part. Okay, gotcha, okay. So what does that entail exactly?
Everything that's in the woodshipped area, so pretty much the swings, the slide, the climbing structures. When you walk into Lincoln Park, it's everything on the right-hand side of that park.
Right, okay. Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Mr. Testani. Ms. Charlton? And then back to you, Mr. Matola.
Thank you. And Anthony, I appreciate your answer to John's question, which was basically that you don't need your strategic plan to be done to know that these playgrounds need to be replaced. But on that note, can you just tell us where that, where that plan stands? The status of it?
Absolutely. So the contract was just awarded by the Board of Selectmen last week, pending approval from the town attorney and the vendor's attorney. And I believe that we just did get a signed contract back yesterday or the day before. So we're hoping to hit the ground running later this week.
Okay, so the vendor selection was done, but it hasn't really started yet in terms of the study? Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Ms. Charlton, Mr. Matola.
I'm just looking. This isn't for Anthony. I don't know if everybody's done with Anthony questions. It's under this quality of life topic, though. Is there no other Anthony questions?
Yeah, you can go ahead and ask Anthony.
Okay. I, I'm all, yeah, I'm all done with Anthony. I don't know if anyone else had Anthony questions. I, all I wanted to ask is on the paving and sidewalk repair, or the side, I'm sorry, the sidewalks, Southport and Stratfield. For Southport, are we talking about like those old historic sidewalks that are like in Pequot Avenue area? Is that what we're looking to?
No, John. This is, this has been a longstanding project. It's the, when you come off the exit ramp on 19, into Southport, and you've got like that whole intersection there.
Yep.
That's been a problem for many years. And I know the town did a whole connectivity project, you know, for pedestrians and safety. And obviously, Bill can speak about this. You guys probably saw this a while ago because this was before even my time. I was a state rep, but I was, I remember that you guys, you know, the town was looking at this quite a while ago. But in, if you look back up, it tells you about Exit 19, and it's 300 feet west of Holt Highway Intersection. And it gives a whole sort of overview of what's going on there. It's actually dangerous, and there's been, there's been people hit there. And it's, it's just not, it's not safe.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matola. And I missed your point about Mr. Calabrese. So we're still on this, you know, quality of life. So if anyone can go back to Mr. Calabrese, they wish. Any other questions on these items? Ms. Marmian.
Thanks very much. I want to talk about the Fairfield Theater Company, or I'm sorry, the performance stage and public restrooms for a moment. And just as some background, at our last meeting, we had asked if there was a plan for this. And Ms. Kupchak said, yes, she believed there was a plan. And Mr. Jall at the, at the History Museum actually called me directly because he said, I know you were asking if there's a plan. So I did have a conversation with him, which was a very good constructive conversation. And basically, he told me, there's not a plan per se. What there is, is there's funding available. They saw an opportunity, a great opportunity. They have these concerts in the summer, and they'd like to put up more permanent, you know, more- they'd like to put up more permanent, you know, more permanent stage and restroom facilities for both the concerts and then people who are using the fields, et cetera. I talked about some of the feedback that I've gotten and perhaps other board members have gotten from members of the community, that there was concern that this plan had not, or proposal had not been vetted with members of the community. And he said, that's true, and they are 100% committed to vetting this proposal with the community. And that would be the first stage of their plan. So I was encouraged by that. And I also said, you know, the criteria really are that anything that's approved should be shovel-ready. And he said, it's not shovel-ready. We have some ideas of a design, but we have to hire the designer. Again, it would have to be vetted with the community, but we're very efficient, and we could get this project done quickly. We've got good experience with Bur Mansion, et cetera. We feel that we could get this done by, you know, 2024, et cetera. So, long story short, I recommended that he put together a plan for this board to look at, even with a timeline of when he was going to go out to the community, you know, when he might have a design, with costs, et cetera. And he also explained that they needed to do fundraising. In addition to the $450,000, they would need to go out and raise more money because this is not the total cost. So anyway, he said he would get us a plan. It's my understanding, we haven't gotten a plan unless Ms. Kupchak can tell us something otherwise. Have you received anything, Ms. Kupchak?
No. What Mr. Geely told you is correct. He needs to save money to develop the plan and then go out to the community with it. And I know there's been some emails saying that they don't like it. Currently, what Mr. Geely is doing is similar to what they're proposing. They just put a temporary stage up. This activity is happening on the town green on the weekend. It's just that it's a temporary stage. And they're utilizing the bathrooms in the museum. And I thought having permanent bathrooms instead of porta-johns on our town green was much more attractive, obviously, than porta-johns. So, listen, I think this was, you know, when you first came to me, I was a little apprehensive. And, you know, as we spoke, I, you know, obviously, I'm here, I see these things happening on the weekend, when I'm leaving Friday night. I see our community enjoying these concerts. I see our young people playing sports on the back field here. And we have porta-johns on the town green. It doesn't look nice. I thought it was worthwhile to put on the list and let Mr. Geely try to work this out. And if it so happens that he can't work it out, or if there's too much opposition, per se, from the community, then, you know, then we'll cross that bridge, I thought, when we get to it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm actually all in the meeting, so I'm happy to, it's Mike Geely for the Fairfield Museum. I'm happy to answer specific questions that you want to ask.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here, and please go ahead.
So, I'm sorry, she alerted me to cut you off, if you have.
Well, okay. Ms. Marmian, do you want to make a comment before?
No, no, I think we should hear from Mr. Geely, and maybe you can, you know, add to what I said. I hope I represented our conversation. But if there's other things that you want to add or to flesh the...
Sure.
Be great.
Thank you, Ms. Marmian. You did represent it somewhat accurately. I did actually put together the memo that you had requested and sent that to the Finance Director. I'm not sure if that has made it up to the Board of Finance. You had asked me to send it to the Finance Department, which I did. So that's maybe where it still lies. You know, in answer to a number of the questions, we have worked with designers already and looked at architecture for both the performance stage and for bathrooms. I think where we have not sort of put the final touches on the design is because if this money is forthcoming, if this board approves this funding, it is the museum's intent to sit with the Old Post Road Association, to sit with our neighbors, and to hear their concerns and make sure that the final design reflects their concerns and reflects any kind of modifications that they may request. We're very sensitive to the fact that the museum sits in a residential neighborhood, and we want to make sure that any use of the town green, although it's a public space, is appropriate. And so we're fully committed to doing that process, and I'm fully confident that that will move along very quickly, and that by, I would say, early in next year, we will be able to have final designs to put out to bid next year. Once those bidding processes happen, if there is some funding shortfall, the museum's board is committed to working to fill that. So I don't have any problem with this being relatively shovel-ready and meeting the deadlines of this ARPA funding. The only hesitation that we have right now to not show full plans to the Board of Finance and RTM is just that we want to give the neighbors and the Old Post Road Association opportunity to comment and weigh in on what those final designs should look like.
Mr. Geely, is the information you sent to the administration titled "The Proposal From the Fairfield Museum for Enhancing the Arts and Cultural Infrastructure of Fairfield's Town Green"?
That is.
Okay, so yes, that was in our backup.
Okay. And just to be clear, I had, Ms. Marmian had asked for a construction and design schedule, which I had included. And it was actually the Finance Department that had asked me to take that out of the memo. So trying to satisfy everybody, I'm pretty confident that this can move along very quickly and be satisfied well within the deadlines of the ARPA funding.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I don't see it in my backup, but I guess I'm not sure. What page is that on, Mr. Brown?
This was part of, actually, what this was, when we sent our questions to Mr. Schmidt, and he answered them, right, and we sent them out to the board, it was in that backup. So we received this on September 16.
Okay, I'll look for the email.
Yeah, so that came from Mr. Schmidt, Ms. Kupchak, and then I forwarded it over to everyone on the 16th at 8:14 a.m. I got it. So, okay, thank you. Any further questions? Ms. Charlton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to add my thoughts on this one. First of all, I'll start out saying I appreciate Ms. Kupchak's comments and the rationale in going forward with this, you know, the porta-johns, et cetera. Obviously, that's not ideal. And I'm not necessarily opposed to this. I just feel like for a project like this, I feel like this is a very different project from many of the others on this list because of the need to get community input and the desire to get community input. And, you know, this isn't like, you know, putting up traffic lights or, you know, fixing roads or doing something like that where, you know, you're not going to get objection from the community. I think this is something different. It's more sensitive. We've had some thoughtful letters in opposition. I happen to live, you know, a little bit around the corner. I don't think any of my neighbors are aware of this, honestly, not for any lack of, you know, disclosure in meeting materials and the newsletter or whatever. I just don't think this is well-known. And I'm not necessarily opposed, but I really do think it's premature to ask for approval for this now without having sort of vetted the plan and gone through that process for community approval. I just think it's more of a sensitive item. I don't, again, not necessarily opposed, but I think that this is one that, to me, I would put aside, or I would propose to defer and revisit. I think we can revisit it quickly. I think the work that needs to be done is not work that falls on the administration. And I think the right thing to do in terms of getting community buy-in and neighborhood buy-in would be to have that process occur first and then have a vote to approve the funding. I truly just believe that this funding is premature, and it's, you know, I think this project, again, is different from many of the others. You know, nobody's going to complain about fixing playgrounds and fixing roads. This is, you know, even though there are outdoor events, this is erecting a permanent structure on a place of historical significance. And I do think, you know, the right thing to do in this case would be to defer approval of this until, you know, you know, we've had a chance to flesh it out more, and particularly until community input has been received. So I'm just putting that out there for, you know, any comments or thoughts.
All right, thank you, Ms. Charlton. Yes, Mr. Geely.
Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you, Ms. Charlton, for your comments. I would just say, while I understand what you're saying, I think that, you know, we have really, with this funding, a once-in-a-generation opportunity to invest in the arts and culture infrastructure of our town. And I think I don't need to tell this body that arts and culture are enormous drivers of economic development for our community. I think it's easy to say, let's push this project down the road, let's, you know, let's push this to future funding. But I think we all know that that funding is not going to be forthcoming to this magnitude. I think this is an important opportunity. I know that I'm chasing a little bit the chicken and the egg here in saying that I don't have very specific designs to give to this body because I want community input. But I, you know, the museum has demonstrated this for the past 20 years, both through our renovations of Bur Mansion, through Sun Tavern, all the historic properties in our community. We've done so sensitively, efficiently, financially, on a timely basis. I don't think that there's any criticism of any of the processes that we've managed. So I would ask that this body look at our record, our very successful record over the past two decades of delivering for this community arts and culture infrastructure, whether it be the Fairfield Museum that was largely funded through private donation, or all the town-owned historic properties that we have gone outside municipal government, for the most part, to get funding to do. We have a very successful track record of doing this well, of getting community buy-in, meeting deadlines, and making it under budget. I feel like this is really an important opportunity, and it would be, I think, sadly remiss of this town not to seize this opportunity to invest in the long-term arts and culture infrastructure that can drive really important value, not only for residents, but for future economic development in the future. The museum commons of the town green is one of the most unique and rare historic properties in this part of the state. And the museum, I think, has demonstrated our commitment to revitalize that for the benefit of the entire community, not only our neighbors who are directly abut it, but also all the people that come down and enjoy it. And what we're proposing is not an extreme increase in its use, but really building in the infrastructure so that the people who are already using it, the hundreds of people who come down for Jazz Fridays, the thousands of kids and families who come for Halloween on the Green, and all those events, can do so safely, can go to the bathroom, can, you know, have an infrastructure that they can actually utilize in a good manner. So I think I understand your concerns, Ms. Charlton, but I would say that I think our track record has demonstrated that we can address this efficiently on behalf of the town.
Okay. Mr. Brown, could I just, and I just want to clarify because maybe I wasn't clear, or maybe I was misunderstood. I'm not suggesting that we, you know, deny the project or don't fund it out of the ARPA funds. You know, I'm really questioning the timing because it does frankly seem premature to me at this point. This is not a question of deferring this and then spending that money on something else, and then you coming before us and trying to get bonding or something. I'm not talking about that. I agree with you. I think this is one of those things that, you know, if we didn't have this money, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So I get that. But, you know, there's, and I understand broadly the sense of urgency the administration has to get this list approved and move on because there's competition for contractors and suppliers and materials and all those things. I get that. But, you know, I think this project is unique among the others. I think it's premature. And I would just suggest that we defer this one, or my thought was that we defer this from the funding at the moment, you know, until we complete the next step of the process. You know, Ms. Kupchak said, you know, we'll go through the process, you know, maybe if we get tons of opposition, we'll, you know, we'll rethink it. Well, I mean, if that's the case, we really shouldn't be approving funding at this point now. So again, not suggesting that we don't use this funding for it or that we deny it. But I do think the timing is something I have concern about. And I do think that community buy-in is really important. And, you know, I would hate to see us go down this road and have, you know, have a backlash against it. So, you know, that's all I have to say. But I did just want to clarify that I was not suggesting that we take it off the list, use our ARPA funding elsewhere, and then just hope that we can find money in the future. I realize that's not realistic. That's not what I was suggesting. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Charlton. Any further questions on this, Ms. Marmian?
Yeah, it's not so much a question. It's just kind of to reiterate a little bit what Ms. Charlton had said, which I fully support this project. I think most of us will. And I would simply reiterate that if we postpone this, the funding would still be there. You could come back to us once you had the community feedback and say, this is where they are. They've asked us to tweak things or not, or they're happy, they're not happy, and then ask for the funding. Because as you said, you're efficient in terms of getting things done. And so I feel like our role right now is to say, you know, what makes sense, what doesn't. And then those funds will still be there. So you're not going to miss this opportunity, but we really should do this. You said yourself, so many people use that space. We want to make sure that we preserve it and use it and make surrounding neighbors happy, traffic, everything else. We need to do this right because it is such a beautiful space. So I would actually make the motion, Mr. Brown, if I should do that now, that we reduce the ARPA funding for this specific project by that $450,000.
So what I would like to do is go through the whole list?
And then come back?
And then come back.
Okay.
For motions, because just in case there's another motion, we can kind of go through them at once.
And that's fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments on this project, this particular project? Okay, I'm seeing none. So any other questions on quality of life projects? Any items in this segment?
I, sorry, Mr. Brown.
Ms. Marmian, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment before we moved forward on Rooster River, which is, just to give the administration feedback, that I can't tell you how many people, I live in the Stratfield area, I cannot tell you how many people I have been talking to who are so, have been so devastated by the flooding, the most recent flooding, the flooding a couple of years ago of Rooster River, have lost property, have huge amounts of damage, are desperate, and they are so excited that this project is going to be funded. So it's terrific that the money is there and that we're going to, I fully support it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to echo Ms. Marmian's comments. It's incredible to me it's taken this long for this project to come up. It really, it's been on the waterfall for some time, and those residents have dealt with this situation for far too long. And I'm very glad that we're able to include it and hopefully get started on it as soon as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Kupchak. Okay, we're going to move on from quality of life to the environment, where we have four items. Any questions on any of these four items? Okay, I'm seeing none. Very good. We're at the... We're at the last section of town modernization and infrastructure. Any questions on these items? Mr. Matola?
Um, thank you. Um, on the um, I lost my spot here. The, the, the town board that fiber optic network, um, two questions. Um, just can someone explain just generally exactly what that's going to entail? I know we have some backup on it and I understand that, but just a brief explanation. And it's a, 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 um, a large amount of money and how come that has never been on our waterfall chart and all of a sudden it's popping up now? And maybe it's been on the waterfall chart in a different
Fun.
capacity. So those are my two questions. Tell me a little bit about what this is again and, and the second one is why hasn't it been on our waterfall chart in the past?
So um, uh, thank you, John, for that question. Uh, we do have Dave Kelly on, uh, is he on?
Mm-hmm.
On the line. He, he brought this to us when I met with all the different department heads about projects they felt were really important uh to our, to our town. Dave can explain it better than anybody. He's a IT director and then Jared Smith is also here for any follow-up questions.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I could uh do a little explain what it is. Um, the town and ed connect together roughly forty locations in town using a fiber optic network that is leased. We rent it. Uh, this expense in, in the town IT budget, it's my single largest budget item because it is so expensive. Uh, what this is, is uh basically a rent versus own question. And uh we can purchase our fiber optic infrastructure um uh and save money for the, for the town in the long run. Um, currently, we contract our, our townwide fiber optic network through a company called ChimeNet, which is a, a part of the Connecticut Hospital Association. And uh roughly two-thirds of what we pay ChimeNet just uh is leasing this fiber infrastructure from another company called Crown Castle. Um, so in any event, uh, the idea here is to uh purchase the, uh, our own fiber and use municipal gain uh to get our fiber installed on the utility poles. Um, and then after the, after we pay for it, we no longer have that large annual expense.
Okay, what are the, are there future, I'm sure there are, I don't know if you can answer this question, upkeep expenses for something like this?
Sure, uh, yes, there are. Uh, we, if we, if we own it, we have to also pay to repair it if something happens to it. Uh, we've kinda devised a, a spreadsheet to kinda make some estimates and what-if scenarios. And, and our, our proposal is, is that we plan on spent, uh, banking fifty thousand dollars per year to cover any incidental repairs. Uh, I've spoken with a number of IT directors from other towns and many of them say you can go for years without having any problems or any breakages and then you might get a hurricane or something and you have to spend a few thousand dollars to fix something. Or, uh, you know, there's a utility pole damage, you may have to front the money to repair that, repair the fiber lines if a tree branch or a car causes a problem. Uh, although in the case of a car accident, generally the person's auto insurance reimburses you for, for your repair costs. But uh, yes, if we own this, uh, we take on the, the liability to maintain it, whereas right now it's part of our rental agreement.
And you said you, you thought moving forward in your budget, you're gonna have a line item for maintenance of fifty thousand dollars? Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, in speaking with, uh, we got the estimate of what it would cost to, to do this project from a company that does this for a number of towns in the state and in western Massachusetts, actually. And I, I asked them, I said, well, gee, you know, uh, okay, if we're basically self-insuring the network, uh, if we set aside fifty thousand dollars a year on this to, you know, to make repairs to a network like this, would that be adequate? Um, they actually thought that might be a bit high, but, you know, uh, being conservative, uh, you know, I, we, we bank it, if we, if we don't have any damage in a year, we end up not having to spend the money.
Right. And Jared, I don't know if you're still there, but it, have you looked at this? Do you think from a financial standpoint, this is a prudent thing to do?
Yeah, and I, I wanna thank Dave for bringing this to our attention. It's uh, you know, although it wasn't on the waterfall, it's, my understanding is that it's been talked about internally for a while now. Um, and we thought this was a great opportunity to uh, to, to, to take advantage of this and a great use of the funding. Um, it, it will produce savings and to find uh this kind of savings in a single line and a single, single function is not easy to come by. Um, so I just wanna thank my, I, you know, I, I think this is a, a great use of the money.
Okay. Thank you for answering my questions. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Any further questions on infrastructure? Okay, I am seeing none. Uh, Ms. Marmian?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Um, I apologize. Can we go back? I know we're not supposed to. Um, but back to the environment. I just, I don't, the reason I didn't bring it up before is I don't really have a question as much as a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Marmian.
Thank you very much. So back to the environment with the um electric, electric hybrid vehicles and the electric car charging stations. I appreciate that um Ms. Kupchak and the administration had provided us some backup at our last meeting, um, that got to um the um, the mileage on some of the cars, the age of the cars, um, and obviously, um, the desire to um upgrade the Crown Victorias, which are old and gas-guzzling uh machines with a more um environmentally fri- friendly, um, climate-friendly vehicle. And I fully support that. I still have concerns, honestly, that we don't really, or I don't feel that I have a sense of true analysis of the uh, not just the number of employees who use these cars, um, but the amount of time, how many cars we actually need. So we were given a number, I believe it was fifteen um electric vehicles and I, I'm just not sure that we have enough analysis to justify the fifteen versus seven versus twenty. Um, and also, that's number one. Um, and number two, that we fully explored um as a town, um, if this is the best way to have our inspectors, um, you know, members of the engineering department, et cetera, use town vehicles. It's, it's approximately a million dollars when you include the charging stations. Um, and I just, I, I feel similar to the way we discussed the history museum. I support electric vehicles. I support safe, efficient use of these town vehicles. I'm just not convinced yet that we have enough analysis to say this is the amount. So just to kind of forewarn everybody, I would make a motion to um ta- remove this and my rationale for that is that um, I, I would appreciate it if the administration would do that analysis and show us why fifteen and show us that there aren't other ways to kind of um uh have people use vehicles as they go about town business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marmian.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I might just uh chime in?
Yes.
I, you know, I, I, you know, obviously have answered this quite a bit, um, and I, I, I don't know how I could be any more clear. Um, thirty cars are used by town employees directly in this building. We are asking to replace fifteen of those cars. Those would be for people who use the cars all the time. And the other fifteen, my administration will be doing an analysis on how we will move forward with those. We don't really need to do any further analysis, that we have fifteen employees who use cars every day. They generate economic activity for the town and they are driving around in Crown Victorian that are gas-guzzling, they're bad for the environment and they are, actually, I would deem them unsafe. So that's just, that's, that's the analysis. Um, there really is no further analysis um on the fifteen. And as I spoke about at the last meeting, if we do deem after our analysis on the remaining fifteen, that we may need a few more cars, um, and then the other ones would be shared or some other different arrangement, we would include that in the operating budget going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kupchak. Ms. Marmian?
And thank you, Ms. Kupchak. I appreciate that. Have you done any analysis to look at, for example, um, having, I'm just gonna raise this, having employees use their own cars and then get reimbursed for miles, um, et cetera? Any sort of broader look at how um we use the cars or whether or not we should be using, from an efficiency standpoint, town vehicles uh versus?
Yes, we, we did look at that actually and our risk management said it's a, it's a huge liability to have employees using their own cars. Especially the fifteen who use them so frequently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Marmian. Okay. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none. We are ready to vote on the motion before us. So I open it up to the board. The motion is before us. I open it up to the board to make any amendments to the motion. Mr. Walsh?
I'm not gonna make an amendment, I just wanna make a statement. You know, there's a lot of things on this list. We've been going over them for a couple of months. I know the administration spent months and months on this. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of free money. And um, I don't love every project that's on here. And I do like a lot of them. But I think the first select woman has done a very good job about kind of spreading the money out so it benefits um all different segments of our community. And the quandary with this is that, you know, we have nine members on our board and nine of us could wanna spend the money nine different ways. But pursuant to what we have to do here, it's only the first select woman that can put this to, before us, about what she wants to spend the money on. And I, I intend to vote on this package of uh matters for us, even the ones I don't like. Because there's a lot of things I do like. But if we're gonna get into like choosing and picking which ones we each like and making individual motions, I, I guess I'm prepared to go in and choose the things I don't like and remove those. That's where we're gonna, we're gonna go and I guess it'll just be whatever numbers we, we all can get to vote for each matter. But I, I just think the entire package is a good package of things this community should be doing. So, you know, I kinda look at this as the way, unfortunately, Congress has to do this all the time with these spending packages. Gotta take the things you don't like with the things that you like, um, and sometimes hold your nose and vote. Um, so I plan on voting for it. I hope everybody else will do the same and will move forward with this. Because otherwise, it's just gonna get, you know, I don't know where this package will go and then I'll have to get back to the first select woman to choose other things we don't vote on. Just wanted to put my statement on the bottom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Further, Mr. Testani?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna dovetail off uh what Mr. Walsh said. I totally agree with a lot of his comments, a lot of his observations in terms of voting on the entire package. And um I just wanna say that I would, I would be following the same course of action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Any further questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Charlton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I generally agree with what Mr. Walsh said too. I think, uh, you know, there were a lot of points of view expressed to the board about how we should spend the money. Um, you know, it's not up to us, it's up to the administration to put a proposal forward. They did that. And um, I think, like everyone else, I think there's a lot of good in here. There's a lot that I like and some things I don't like, paving in particular, which I, I hate that it's in here, but I believe it's absolutely necessary. Um, so, you know, I support it. Um, I do wanna make a motion though, and I do feel strongly about this. Uh, because I feel strongly about it, I'm, I'm going to make a motion. I do, I, I would make a motion to remove the four hundred and fifty thousand for the performance stage. Again, not because I don't support it or because I don't think that um, this is something we could allocate this money toward in the future. But I think it's very premature and uh I think it's a sensitive issue to the neighborhood. I think it deserves community input and I believe that um, that we should do that before we commit funding. So my motion would be to um remove the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars um under quality of life, um, that was allocated for the performance stage and the public restrooms to be uh, to be revisited later.
Okay, do I have a second? Ms. Marmian seconds the motion, so that motion is now before us to reduce four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the performance stage and the public restrooms. Comments, questions, thoughts on this motion before we vote on this amendment? Mr. DeWitt?
Um, thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman Chris DeWitt. I, I certainly understand um Ms. Marmian and Mr. Charlton's um comments about the stage. And I most certainly agree that we should get the neighborhood involvement in, in, in agreement. Um, I frankly don't see the benefit of removing it. If you, if you both are supportive of the, of the stage, you know, listen, this, i- i- in, in Mr. Walsh's words, this is one of the ones I'm not crazy about, to be particularly honest with you. But if you really are supportive of this at some point, it's, it's a placeholder. It's just a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item that will only en- will only entice the, the, the museum department to go out and get people to say they want it or don't want it. And if a month from now or six months from now, the community is like, this is not gonna happen, then um, you know, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is if, if, if you're really supportive of the item, I don't see why you guys would want this removed. So, you know, it's, it's just a placeholder. Again, and, and as the first select woman has stated, if the community or, or, or by the way, if they can't raise half the money, this goes away. So I, I guess I'm a little bit lost why, if you're supporting it, why you guys would want this off the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Mr. Matola? I, I believe you're on mute, John.
All right, sorry about that. I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. DeWitt, and I appreciate that. I appreciate what Ms. Charlton said. I'm, I'm kind of fearful that if we vote on this, it may have the effect of having more people come out against it. Because we are getting emails that there hasn't been public input on this. And I, I, I think, pu- I pu- and I think Mr. Jelly said he kinda put the cart before the horse and if we do it that way, you may have some pushback and blowback on something like this. So that's what I'm concerned about and um- So, that's what I'm concerned about, and so, I'm still up in the air what I'm going to do on this, but that's a concern that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. I think I would just comment, you know, on your point, which I of course understand, is that would be okay, actually. That would be, you know, if they see that it's real and they come on out, I think that's better than putting it on the back burner and they don't think it's real and they, people don't come out. So whatever's going to get us as much public input as possible, I think is, you could argue is the correct course of action. That's my comment there. This, Mr. DeWitt?
I, no, I agree, Mr. Brown, if, if, if the, if us keeping it on this list has blowback or doesn't have blowback, if we're engaging the neighborhood, then even more reason to leave it in, as you said, I think that's, you know, I think that's, that's the right thing to do.
Mr. Healy?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to just comment. I would just say, I understand, I don't think, Mr. Matola, that I said earlier that I was putting the cart before the horse, I think that the museum is very committed to engage in the neighborhood on this. I think that, you know, look, this body is looking at a lot of things that are, have been in the waterfall plan for a long time. There are a few opportunities here to be visionary for the town, this is one of them, right? Being visionary and investing in the future and in the arts and culture infrastructure does not always come in a complete package, because it takes community input. To be effective, to be most enjoyed by the largest number of people in our community, it's a process, and I think that the museum has shown throughout its many decades of service to the community, we take the money that the town invests with us and we multiply it, you know, by multiples. We, you know, we've delivered for this community and economic development and arts and culture infrastructure, and so I think this is an opportunity to be visionary, to invest in sort of the way that we would like our community to be, to offer for our residents, and I would advocate, I would encourage you to support this. I think that if you're, and I don't know exactly how the allocation of these fundings will roll out after approval, you know, if this body is concerned, I think that you could leave it up to the selectmen's office to wait until we come forward with a finalized proposal, which we will do. So, I would hate to get this shot down, I think, you know, we're going to lose momentum, we're going to lose interest, the museum has a lot of things going on, you know, we don't, we're a small staff, we don't have a lot of time to put into something that doesn't have the backing of the community. So, I would urge you to, to vote on a vision for what this community could be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments on this motion, this, the amendment? Ms. Marmian?
I, I just want to reiterate, I think there's support for this, I certainly support it. The issue is, you need to get the feedback from the community, in my mind. It could change a lot in terms of your design, it could change how you're thinking about the use of that space, or not, but regardless, you want to have that information before moving forward, and honestly, the support, I believe, is here with the board, you can turn on a dime, put together the plan, the funding will still be there, and as you said, you can work very quickly. So I, I think we should just do our due diligence on this, with the understanding that if this is not in this, in tonight's vote, it can be in, in a month or two months or three months from now, and you're not going to lose a lot, but you'll certainly gain in terms of what you've learned from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Ms. Charlton?
Thank you. I don't want to beat a dead horse, so I'll just leave it at this, because I do want to respond to Mr. DeWitt, I understand his question, and just make a point. You know, I, I think the way I've tried to phrase it before is I'm not unsupportive, but you know what, if we put this out to the community and we started getting dozens or a hundred letters of opposition, I would change my mind. You know, I think that is important, and it's not just my, you know, so it's not just about my personal opinion, I don't, I don't object to the idea of this, I understand the value of it. I think, as I said, we've gotten some thoughtful letters in opposition that makes sense, and I think there are very few people in the neighborhood that understand that this is being proposed right now. And so, you know, to me, a funding decision should wait until we have the information, and so that, I hope that clarifies where I'm coming from. Again, not unsupportive, but I think we are premature. So, that's it. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. And just one statement about the process, just to clarify, it's not for our board, just for the public, which is, we approve, if we approve this and it stays in, and it goes to the RTM and it stays, it's then up to the first select woman to release the funds. If we're getting letters, she's getting letters, and if she gets letters, I know the first select woman responds and listens and tries to get a consensus, and at that point, she can make a decision to move forward or not, and if she decides not to move forward, she can come back before this board and say, look, I have another use for this four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But at least this, it makes it real, and the public, which, which, you know, our town residents are very good, and it's very much appreciated, I know, on all our boards, at providing feedback. And I believe our boards are very good at listening to that feedback, and I believe, and I know the first select woman is as well. So, there's two different paths that we can take. I'm, I'm looking at leaving this in, let the public respond, let the first select woman at that point make a decision, and if there's enough overwhelming feedback on not to move forward, then she can, she can come back to us, make a decision. So, I lay that out there. Ms. Kupchak, if you want to make a comment, follow up with my statement, and then possibly we can move on to vote on this amendment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman Brown, you couldn't have said it any better, obviously, I think that's, I would be the prudent way to go, it would allow us to hear from the community, the project wouldn't have been approved, as you said, if it passes the RTM, and then we can hear from them, and then we can make a change if there is something. I mean, if, if the history museum is unable to raise the rest of money, or if the project is too controversial and we, we can't get it passed, yes, I would come back to the board to find out for a transfer for another project. So I appreciate your comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kupchak. Are we ready to vote on this motion for the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the motion of reducing the line item, performance stage, public restrooms for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, say aye. Mr. Matola, Ms. Charlton, and Ms. Marmian are in favor, and all those opposed would be Mr. Brown, Mr. DeWitt, Ms. Claire, Mr. Fogel, Mr. Testane, Mr. Walsh, is your hand up? Okay, so that motion fails. Three yeas, six noes. Through the motion. Okay, any other motions, any other amendments? Okay, we have the original motion in front of us. Ms. Marmian?
Here come the cars. Here come the cars, Ms. Kupchak. Actually, I'm here to say that I'm, I mentioned that I would be making a motion before to reduce this amount, and thank you for your answer in terms of the, the further information in terms of the fifteen cars, et cetera, et cetera, so I will support this and will not make a motion to reduce. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marmian. Any other thoughts, comments, questions on any other item? I am seeing none, so we are ready to vote on the original motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let me just read the names, Mr. Brown, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Fogel, Mr. Testane, Mr. Walsh, Ms. Marmian, Ms. Claire, Ms. Charlton, and Mr. Matola are all in favor. There are noes, there are no-noes, so this motion passes, nine, nothing. Thank you, everybody, for your, you know, for your input and feedback and thoughts. Thank you, Ms. Kupchak. I'd just say one last thing about this, is that it does give us, the town, an opportunity to look at a strategic vision, because this will free up our debt, it'll free up operating costs, and so therefore it'll free up funds, and it gives us an opportunity to, to move this down forward in a strategic way, and that's, that's a plus for all of us, plus for Fairfield and our residents. We will go to the...
I just want to say, thank you, Ms. Chairman Brown, and for your leadership of the board, and for all your hard work in trying to help facilitate information to your members so that we could move forward with this. Obviously, as I stated in the past, we are in stiff competition with other towns, we're spending their money already, and we want to really get moving on these projects so that we can also be able to get that money spent. So I want to thank you very much for your leadership and for your assistance, and I want to thank the members for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Kupchak. And thank everybody for being here tonight, I'm talking about our town attorney, department head, bond counsel, thank you very much, you are free to drop off, we just have a couple more items, it should take just a few more minutes, but thank you for being here. Item number four, to hear, consider, and act upon any communication, are there any, Ms. Kupchak, or Jared?
No, nothing further. See you next week.
Yes, just as a reminder, Mr. DeWitt, I'll get right up to you, our next meetings are quarterly on September 29th, and following that will be our regular meeting on October the 5th. Mr. DeWitt?
No, I'm all, I'm all good, thank you.
Okay. Item number five, to adjourn, may I have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Fogel?
Sorry, real quick question. I, I had it down as the 28th, but is it the 29th?
It's the, it's the 29th.
Okay.
Wednesday.
At 7:30?
Yes, that was going to be, yes, 7:30, that was going to be our Capitol Planning Workshop, we moved that, I'll get a date for us shortly, and we're going to be back.
No problem.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Fogel, can I have a second, please, to adjourn? Mr. Walsh, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, good night, everybody, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Have a good night.
Night.